I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, May 14th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room.
Okay. Before we begin, it is with deep sadness that I share the news that Darien High School freshman Ben Jacobson passed away peacefully Sunday morning as a result of prolonged medical complications. Mrs. Dunn has shared the following words about Ben. Ben was beloved by friends, teachers, nursing staff, and paraeducators, and all were touched by his smile, his hugs, and his gentle, kind, and loving heart. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with Ben's parents, Erin and Catherine, and his sister Chloe, a junior at Darien High School, who dearly love him and who are so proud of the impact Ben had on everyone whose lives he touched. We know you join us in the offering of your heartfelt condolences and deep sympathy to Ben's family at this time. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor the life of a remarkable young man. Thank you very much. First, a little bit of housekeeping. Our security and fiscal year '24 operating appropriations passed at the Board of Selectmen last night and are scheduled to go before the Board of Finance mid-month and to the RTM their June meeting, which has been changed to June 17th. Our transportation special appropriation, as you know, was approved by the Boards of Selectmen and Finance and goes before the RTM on this coming Monday, the 13th. In terms of what's in front of us tonight, there are a couple of process things to clarify. The remaining steps in the budget process for our partners are now that the budget is through the Board of Finance, the RTM is scheduled to approve on the 13th. Their options are to approve the budget as is, to further reduce the budget, or to reject it. In the last case, if they were to reject it, our budget would revert to last year's approximately $116 million. Our budgetary adjustment timeline, bearing in mind the fact that the RTM is still in their process, first, it must be completed by June 30th before the beginning of the next fiscal year. Secondly, we've chosen a three-meeting cycle to give everyone an opportunity to properly consider the options. But of course, we've left a little time in there should we need it. The plan is for presentation and questions tonight. Further clarifications and additional questions on May 14th with a vote on the 28th. Public comment will be available after this meeting and for the remainder of the time. We, of course, are taking a look at the numbers tonight before the RTM has finished their process. So part of why we're only this tonight is preliminary and that we need the subsequent two meetings is we want to make sure that we have the final number from the RTM. Of course, our capital budget was largely approved. That is a line item veto number. Excuse me, the Boards do have line item veto over it. There's one item that didn't pass, but on the whole, it went through. Operating perspective, there is no line item veto. We're just granted a dollar number. So we need to actually internally do the adjustments, which is why we're starting our conversation tonight. As we move forward, we'll look at potentially some puts and takes. We do not need to adjust past the final number because our number is our number. So it's not like I've got where there's an open end. We're working towards a very specific number. Okay. Tonight, Alan and Rich will present an overview of their proposal, and then I will open it to Board questions. We ask, as we listen tonight, that we follow the following framework. As a Board, we're going to focus first on administrative suggestions, additional considerations that any Board members might have, should be budgetarily significant, should be well-considered, and if appropriate, researched. And ideally, nothing that will require a policy change in the middle of this process. Let's see, I'll repeat the request from the beginning of the budget process that we remember that we're talking about people, our students, teachers, staff, and families. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, today is National Teachers' Day, and tomorrow is School Nurse Appreciation Day. So certainly, we are grateful for all of those staff members, among others. Okay. So with that, I'll turn it to Alan and Rich to run through what they have in mind, and then, like I said, I'll open it to Board questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are in person this evening and those who are online. Special word of appreciation to the Minister's staff and McKenna's staff for their efforts since last we spoke. There are three documents tonight. One is a memorandum, one is just a summary of the, our point summary of the memorandum, and then there is the accompanying Excel spreadsheet. So for parents or community members, if you go online, this was distributed to the Board this evening, and it's also online for you. It's just the actual tracking of it. Regarding these particular reductions that are suggested, we appreciate the Board's consideration of them. Mr. Rudel will adjust the various line items that need to be adjusted, if any are approved or if new ones come onto the table. So with that, I'll just move quickly through the presentation and entertain, happy to entertain questions. So could you open up the presentation, please? Thank you. So we have the approved budget and the Board of Education approved budget at 6:48. We had the post-adjustments. So you'll see in here that there is approximately $450,000 worth of six adjustments that administratively, we think that it's advisable and fiscally responsible to adjust the budget to meet these particular unexpected expenditures. We have discussed many of them along the way. They include health insurance, changes, access costs, and pupil evaluations, the lease for the buses, and the cost for the pensions for drivers and legal fees. So we can talk about those a bit later, but that, we have made the reductions to cover the $453,000 additional expenditures that we would recommend to the Board. To the Board of Finance, understandably, reduced our budget by $2 million. So we, in this presentation, have reduced it by basically $2.4 million to get to the $4.73. Whether the Board would like to make those reductions or take those considerations into consideration as to plan for the expenditures is an item open for discussion. So going through our reductions here, we looked at it from an efficiency point of view, a revenue point of view. We tried to protect students' core programming, as difficult as it has been. And I wanted to respect certainly the Board values and positions that you have taken along the way through this particular budget process. So you'll see that we have framed these in a couple of buckets for you. The first one being the retirements. I will say that the teacher notification incentive that was offered by the Board of Education has allowed us to realize these attritions and these retirements. We had nine. Others are in special education areas and other in elementary sections. So we can't really count that because we'll have to actually replace those. But these are ones that the contract that was negotiated two sessions ago allowed for, permitted, and actually positioned as to have students at the, or sorry, teachers at the middle school move from four classes to five. So the retirements there are two in English, one in social studies, two in science, with the savings that you realize are of $657,000. The district received one non-certified retirement. That was in the maintenance department after the approval of the Board of Education budget. So this realizes a savings because of the new salary schedule of $44,000. Since the approval of the budget, there was one non-certified staff position turnover resulting in a turnover savings of just approximately $11,000. So the enrollment-driven changes, I don't know if it's a surprise or not a surprise. I respected the Board. Prior to this, did not support this recommendation. I would ask the Board for a reconsideration of those. So I have put back in again the enrollment-driven changes. I would say I've been consistent about this. I think these are, these are changes that fall within the policy. And I think we can actually realize these particular savings and shouldn't actually work them within the policy. I would always recommend that. So with your understanding, I put them back on the table again. I did, sorry, through the middle school here. I heard the Board, I heard our community. We have tried to look at these middle school changes from a point of view of honoring the Board values and setting the table, but also honoring its administration responsibility to execute on it. Your values that I heard, and from the, particularly from the Board of Education, but also from the community. You respect the culture, you like the smaller class sizes, and asked me to work within the policy. The team model you value. You value the personalization of the middle school schedule and also intervention and support in the schedule. Those are the values that I've tried to honor in this particular proposal through this. There was questions about, potentially still are questions, about what is the model? And I will say to you that we have had the scheduling consultant work with the middle school and work with the staff and work with the administration. Ninety, 95% of the schools in our sort of demographic area and in our size would typically go to a three-team model. At this particular point, looking at the meetings that have already took place, it's very likely that that will be the recommendation. So just to give you a sense of what has taken place and what we have tried to do. But I think we have honored the values and the processes the Board has asked us to, and we are ready and confident to execute on that. On the non-certified staff, the Board put back in the five instructional power professionals. We would ask for your consideration to withdraw those again. And again, we have various districts. We did the comparisons. You've seen some of those comparisons before. This was also, if you remember, we put in additional substitute teachers. So on top of the five, we also have an additional, except for Royal, we have additional substitute teachers sitting in there. Minimally, I think we should look at something there. But it'd be our recommendation that we put the five power professionals, or reduce the five power professionals again. We have a campus monitor there, and that campus monitor would come from the high school. We did a little bit of a comparison. It's not ideal to give that up. There are different levels of security and supervision. This is primarily a sort of supervisory position. I also want to recognize that currently, the administrative positions are still in there, the assistant principal and so on. One of the things that the assistant principals have to do is get out for visibility and connection to our teachers and to our students and be around the building a little bit more. I'm okay with that reduction. There's never an ideal number for that, but I can support that. The Director of Security supports it. We then went to some in-sourcing.
Can you talk to that?
Oh, sorry. I beg your pardon. Sorry. Yes, the reduction of the art and music, this was again for the elementary. We are not changing any program or any amount of minutes for the art of the music. The general music and the PE are the same. The current art will be the same. We'll actually be expanding it to ELP. So through the scheduling, an efficient scheduling, we believe we can realize that one. And again, same for the general music teacher. There's no experiences that the children are going to experience differently. The in-sourcing, since the budget, we also have staff background checks and through Marge's office. The state needs to be, take a very long time around that. And we feel that we can go back to a process that was already in place and bring this back in-house, and they will turn it around quicker than they. The reason we made doubt is because it was too slow a process. That has quickened up. We feel as if we can bring that in-house. This is a wee bit for the technology that needs to be taken care of. So we have $22,000 savings for that because currently we outsource that. We had a, we're considering and recommending here, actually, the addition of a groundskeeper for those members of the Board who maybe are new. This has come up in different times throughout the last couple of years, pretty consecutively. Even in this year's budget, it talks about it. It doesn't advocate for it because it just couldn't get there. So this talks about bringing in-house that one groundskeeper for these courtyards and for the size of Oxford Edge and so on and so forth. We have basically advocated for and been consistent in that particular, in that particular line item. There is a line item called care of maintenance specifically, and we would be bringing it in, and that would, that would replace the care of the grounds. One of the things we're going to experience is, so what are you not going to get? Well, we're going to have to lean on the staff itself, the custodial staff, maintenance staff, and the ground staff. When schools, when school gets up and running, at the start of school, we all like it to be nice, right? We like it to be nice all year round. I would be one who would do commentary about the state of the grounds, the floor beds and everything else that goes with it. This is something that will fall back on our, on our staff a little bit more because we're giving up the care of the grounds essentially, the outsourcing of it. But we feel that if we can do that, and that realizes the savings of $68,000, or you see how it's delineated. The district's speech and language pathologists, there's two here, the district's speech and language pathologists and also the occupational therapy services. Grouped together, we felt, we heard the Board that, can you go back and look at this one more time? So with Rich and Shirley, we went back to look at that with them. Let Shirley speak to this a little bit. But particularly for the SLPs that we have in-house, prior to this, some of the services that were being offered prevented us to go down this road a wee bit. So it's a combination of the uniqueness of the services, a combination of the services. The occupational services, five occupational services. Basically, the $54,000 of additional transfers that have been made through the superintendent's adjustments have indicated that that line item would need to be, actually, that line item would need to be adjusted if we don't take this because we're experiencing a higher run rate there. And we have had to make adjustments in the budgets to actually accommodate that. So that is a realization of 97,000 upbringings and five occupational therapists. And again, two SLPs. Shirley, if you want to just speak that real quickly, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Ali. We made a commitment to the Board earlier in the budget process that we would try to see if we could bring in more in-house services for speech and language therapists. We spoke about specialized speech and language therapies that we need for many of our students. We've looked at the IEPs. We've also seen that there's going to be an increase in costs for not only the provision of outside contracted SLP services, but evaluations as well. Looked at our current IEPs for our students and our specialized programs, and we believe there would be a cost savings on one side, and most importantly, on the other side, to have our providers in-house in Darien. So we can do that with the addition of two speech therapists with a cost saving. OTs, there's been a very large turnover. Some of you may know that this year from contracted service providers, especially with our OTs. Many families have reached out to us also to ask if it's possible to look for in-house OTs for stability of services. Their prices have significantly gone up in terms of contracted providers, some of the providers, as have their evaluations. So again, the cost savings to bring in OTs would do two things. One, it would be a savings in our cost as well as continuity of providers.
So in our category is revenue. The state does, I think Mr. Rudel has spoken to us before, but the state does allow us to account for an operating budget line item where we can expense some of the income that we receive. This particular revenue increases our food services, our meals, school lunches, by 50 cents for all grade levels, elementary, middle school, DHS for a savings of $200,000. It will make us one of the higher, not the highest, but certainly one of the higher districts for school lunches. That is for sure, some of those data, if you need the data. But this is, this is an area to potentially look at some revenue to offset the budget. There is an athletic participation fee. I know that didn't pass it the last time at the budget review. You're going to forgive me for putting it back on again. But again, I'm trying to maintain the programs that we have for students academically and otherwise and programmatically, extracurriculars and so on are important. But there is an opportunity here to offset this. And this is, going back to a proposal and also sort of solidifying a different proposal of basically 200 per sport with a cap of $1,000 and financial and aid being available for families. It does include some of the more specialized sports that have rinks and bigger venues that they need squash and so on. That, that will be on the top of the rental fee, the 70%. So it'll be on top of, the way it's proposed here, it'll be on top of the rate that is paid for skiing, squash, rowing, and so on. The equipment, the replacement desk has been an ongoing discussion about the equipment. We went back and looked at the desk and took a different wee position on it that we would try and replace 200 per year over a five-year period just to offset, instead of getting them all in one go. Administrative laptops will defer the replacement of about 30 laptops, and that gets us to the 2.45 million. So if I look over at the budget re-increases, again, these are the ones that census changes, transportation model, transportation parking, legal fees, pupil evaluations, and the excess cost. So the excess cost would be going from 75% we're suggesting to 70%. This year's budget was 70, and as you know, it goes down to 66. There's at least three other districts that we're off that have reduced their excess costs for next year, given what has happened at the state. So either the state fund is going to, has to go up or the special education bucket that's being required has to go down, and neither seems like a likely proposition. So administratively, we are recommending that we actually do cover the 453. I don't want to start the year with a deficit because that would be the Kimber projection. And we'll have this ongoing discussion all year long. The discussion we've had in the last month or two, you're going to start it from the start of the year. And it's going to be an ongoing issue from the outset. I would recommend and fiscally recommend that we don't do that. But with that, that's the presentation of the $2,453,000 that we need.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Before I open it up to, for questions, I've heard from, I spoke to all of the Board members and have heard that from everyone, that we'd also like to see what an administrative efficiency would look like. So would you please come back with a recommendation on the 14th for some sort of administrative efficiency?
May I comment on that?
You may.
So just a couple of questions that would be helpful perhaps to me. So this, well, I'll say one thing about the administration, right? We tried to make this neutral for the administration, right? We reduced, we increased, we reduced. There is a bit of a loss there in the word language. Just I've been very upfront about that the whole way along. It's one that I would, if I had, like, if all things being equal, that's a reduction that I would not make. So we have come back with a recommendation to you that doesn't touch administration. Not because it doesn't touch administration, because I'll give one opportunity to share it with you. I think you're doing the wrong thing if you do that. The amount of work that people expect in this district and understandably expect, the services that people expect firsthand from parents to Board members to the community at large, you're going to be, you will do, in my opinion, I'll say it once, irreputable damage to the district if you do that, long after I'm gone, long after my cabinet's gone. The quality of work even this Board expects for administration, the services our kids expect, our parents expect. I'm just giving you my professional, that's a, that's a mistake in my opinion, right? I respect the Board wherever it goes with it. But we get down to this, my question would be, why would you take, why would we not? And we'll have the opportunity to go through it. Why would we not take some of these and keep the structure that you have that will serve you and the kids along the way? Why would we, why would we change it from some of this to reducing it from the administration? I would also ask for a wee bit of guidance then in terms of, like, how much would you, how much of reduction do you want to be back to? What's the scope of it? Because reducing administrator might sound like as if we're reducing. I don't want to reduce somebody just for the apic of it. Let's not do that if that's the case. I don't think that is the case. I hope it's not the case. But reducing administrator may not reduce, may not result in the amount of savings that you think it might result in. And I just don't know why you would do it over some of these things, but that'll be an ongoing discussion. I just would, I would ask for your consideration on that. But I would like a wee bit of guidance and like, what is the scope we're talking about in terms of this particular presentation? What would you not be doing potentially? Or is there a scope you want me to come back with? I would say to you, we still have a program in place that serves our district very well moving forward, the current proposal we have on the table. I understand the Board's asked me to go back and do it, but I would ask for a wee, a wee bit of guidance on that. And as I come back, we can, we can consider the merits of it. But at this point, I'm very concerned about the proposal to do that. But that being said, it's through the Board's, it's the Board's budget, and we'll do what the Board wants. But I would like a wee bit of guidance on it.
So I would say at this point, it's impossible to tick and tack what we give or not give in terms of anything in the memo. So yes, we understand the proposal. We appreciate it, but the Board hasn't deliberated on it. So it's, it's difficult to say this is what we would trade it for. But you are certainly right that if that proposal or any other proposal that were to come up during this period of time were to be attractive, it would supersede something else because we only, we have to hit a certain number, and we have no need to go beyond that. I'd say in terms of guidance, my suggestion would be that unless you truly have no idea, you guys take a look and come back to the table with what you think is most palatable. If there truly is nothing palatable, then we'll make that decision for you on the 14th.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. I think I'll be mistaken, but we'll, we'll agree to disagree on that. But thank you.
Understood.
So can I ask a final question?
Yes.
I know we have a number right now that we're talking about, but we don't know that to be our final number because the RTM has not voted on the budget, correct? So we're not going to tick and tack tonight or before the RTM votes. We also don't know for certain that this is where we need to land until that happens.
Correct.
So variables might still need to come into play.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Are there Board questions on the memo? Thank you for the work that went into it. John?
So the question was left on the table, these post-budget increases, whether or not we should budget for them. And I just wanted to, you know, open that discussion and say absolutely because, Alan, to your point, I want to budget properly and don't want to start the next fiscal year in a hole, fully knowing that these items exist.
Does anybody else have an opinion on these items? Understanding there are two different categories. Some are known, like the census changes and the legal fees. Others, the excess cost is a highly probable, but not known. Julie?
Thank you. I do have questions about it. I'm curious if we identified a threshold for something that we feel like we need to increase as the post-budget and what that was and how we arrived at it. I'm curious about the combination between knowns and unknowns. While I understand that it's probably quite reasonable to expect that excess cost will not come in at 75%, is 70 the right number? I'd love to see the last five years where we landed on excess cost. And when do we know that? It's usually on the right, on the same schedule.
So you won't know until May of next year where it lands? If you were to do the budget today and start fresh, you'd probably budget 66%, not 70%. So it would be an even larger number. I mean, one of the issues you have is state claims are the highest they've ever been. The state government has not put any more money in excess costs as it is. So one of two things has to happen. Either the state has to put more money in their budget, which hasn't happened, or claims have to fall. And so at this point, there really isn't any district in the area that's seeing special education costs come down. Had the state not put more money in their budget for this year, instead of getting 66%, we probably would have been below 60%. So 70 is probably still aggressive, but it will also depend on what you spend, right? And so if you have changes in tuition, whether positive or negative, or contracted services, positive or negative, whatever it might be, while the rate might be lower, you might still hit your number because it depends on what you spend. So that's why we chose 70. For the other items like census changes, we do build into the budget like a variable, assuming certain things will change. So we not only hit that variable, we exceeded it by four. And so what that means is you had individuals who left the district who either had no insurance, or let's say they had single insurance or family plus one insurance, and they were replaced by somebody who either took insurance or they took family insurance. And so you already have a built-in delta of individuals who have changed.
For next year.
For next year, Eddie. For the transportation model, the decision- For the transportation model, the decision was to move to a 401A. So when you go to a 401A, there is an increased cost in the first year, but there's long-term savings, and so that reflects the increased cost for the first year. The lease to park the vehicle, so that is the, the number that was quoted to us by the Fitch Academy, by the Nielsen's. Pupil evaluations, we did have a transfer earlier this year, and we've seen not only the quantity of students needing outside evaluations grow, but the price grow. And so even with the $75,000 increase, it's still less than the number you spent this year. And the reason we chose to make it less than the number you spent this year, as Shirley mentioned in previous meetings, part of those evaluations that we had, it was because we had shortages in psychologists. So we're assuming we're not going to have shortages in psychologists, but it doesn't necessarily mean that will happen. And then in terms of legal fees, the, the costs that were billed by shipment in Goodwin is staying flat, and we're getting rate increases from shipment in Goodwin, so the dollar amount there is based on rate increases from shipment. We don't expect to hit this year's level of legal fees, because you're not going to have a certified contract to negotiate. So you're not going to have a teacher contract or administrator contract, but you still have things, whether it's Title IX investigations, or workers' comp investigations, or policy issues to go over. And so the number that was originally set by the board, the district has never spent that little on legal fees, at least in the last 15 years.
Can I just ask one follow-up to that?
Sure.
Thank you, Rich. Pupil evaluations, if we feel the need to increase that by another 75,000, then wouldn't there be resources that need, that we would expect need to go with that? If we're going to be evaluating and potentially identifying more students with need, it feels funny to add another large sum for evaluations and not be adding resources to serve those students.
The pupil evaluations is the increasing cost of the outside contracted evaluations, because the cost, I had mentioned, have doubled in the last few years, that's what it is.
Okay. Sorry, I lost track of that from our earlier budget discussions. Thank you.
So, Rich, on this topic of known and unknown, do we have the bus contract back? And do we know if there's anything, are there any adjustments coming?
So it's not signed, or attorneys are going back and forth, but we don't expect any adjustments.
Okay. Katie?
Thank you. To follow up on Julie's question, Rich, you did just say that the quantity of evaluations needed are rising in addition to the cost. So Shirley, can you speak a little bit to that? I absolutely understand that the cost of IEs has, has grown quite a bit, but I, I feel that it has been a trend that we've been talking about over the past couple of years, and certainly within this budget, about the rising identification rates. So evaluations are one thing, the testing of students to see if they qualify for special education services. But when those evaluations do yield results that say students need direct services, who's providing them? What capacity are we at? And if we already have evaluations in the budget, and now in May, post a long budget season, we think that we need even more, how do we not need more staffing? Because my recollection is that this proposed budget doesn't, did not add any additional special education staff.
And I think I recall speaking about that earlier in the budget cycle also. We're able to service and provide services in the groups that we have. We have, we have increased, we have four psychologists in the high school now, we have three in the middle school, we have one over at Fitch, and we're able to, in our groups and our delivery of services, support all students. That's why we didn't ask for an increase that. We've also asked for increase in speech lines pathologists that we now have in the high schools. So over the last two years, our increases in staffing have made it available to provide the services for the increase in students that we have. If you look at a trajectory of how, what will go to what percentage next year if it changes, we look at how many students age out of services and how many students come in. We may come in next year for 25, 26, saying we need more, but we're able and confident we have the providers and the teachers to support our current IEP and what we believe we might have for 24, 25. The evaluation's really not just the cost of doubling, but many of them consistent, I know Dr. Dan has spoken to this also, is the increase in mental health needs of our students. Many of those students are general education students who may be evaluated as well. It's not just a special education cost, but it's psychiatric evaluations, as well as other evaluations that may be needed for some of our students. So I think if you look at those increase in evaluations, we're confident we have the staff to address that with the additional supports you've given us over the years. That said, when we look at our budget for 25, 26, we may be having a different conversation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else on this topic? Okay. How about the retirements and resignations? Any questions on that topic?
Thank you to the board, because this was helpful to receive, this incentive was helpful.
Good. Yes.
And Alan, please direct if this should be timed into a different section. I wanted to ask about the specifics of the subject matters that are not being replaced, and how that will impact the middle school. So if we want to talk about that now, or we want to talk about it with the additional cuts, that's where my question lies. I can rephrase it, since that wasn't so clear. I'd like to discuss how the resignations of the specific subjects that we received that won't be replaced, how that will essentially work logistically? What will the schedule look like? I believe that what came in is, is a bit different than what you had recommended. I think that you had recommended essentially like, almost like a team elimination, one from each subject. So because we have a couple in the same subject, how, how do we think about the practical application of scheduling?
So, so we're taking, do you want to take the first one by itself, or sort of a combination of these?
Combination.
Right? So we'll take the combination of it, right? So we're actually taking, we're taking the retirements, the incentive, and the, the FTEs then from there, they're going to go from four to five, so that's probably about 0.8 of a particular position. Those 0.5, or those 0.2s are going to add up to where these teachers in these particular disciplines, these are the middle, these are the middle school positions, the two English, the one social studies, and the two science. The actual reduction for enrollment is a separate thing, which is over the page. Now, it will, we, we will still have interventions, right? But you're going to have more teachers, you're basically going to have eight more teachers who are, are teaching five classes instead of the four classes. But I am taking both explicitly, right? So it could be that you said, Owen, I'm not going to take the enrollment, I just don't know why you wouldn't take the enrollment, because, but that's a different discussion. Could we still do it with here, with the exception of the mathematics and Spanish? Yes, we could do it still with this, but I don't know why you wouldn't take the incentive, early retirement, and do the increase from the four to five, the way the budget said to do that, and take that, take that saving as well. So then the, the enrollment-driven changes, which is the Spanish, the mathematics at the middle school, we would need those two, right? So to actually round out a sort of team if we were doing the team.
So every time a teacher leaves through attrition, four people will pick up a fifth class. And so with the English, you're having eight teachers who will pick up a fifth class, and with social studies, you're having four people who will take up a fifth class. So obviously, you can't make everybody teach five unless it's through attrition, but if you were to, like, wave magic wand and make everybody teach five, it would be three teachers per core subject area, so three English, three science, three social studies, three math. And so with this, you would end up having one more, essentially four people in English not teaching five, and then four people in science not teaching five, and then you have double that for social studies, and then math, you don't have that.
So, sorry, can I just follow up over on this topic? So with that sort of layout, the way you said, Rich, about kind of like how it translates into the model and the schedules, I'm curious about, I'm curious about where the gaps would be in the scheduling. And you had mentioned, Alan, that it looks like it would move to a three-team model. And I am assuming that you mean across all three grade levels.
Three by three, yes.
So essentially, there would be nine teams, three for each grade level. And I remember when you came to the middle school and you spoke about potential changes about that, and you had said that there would be, that the teams would be a bit bigger, that there would be floating teams. And there were a couple, a couple things that I was just hoping you could clarify, like, I think that you had said that there could be a curricular impact to the floating teachers, and that there's a concern of how they kind of function as a team with that. So can you speak a little bit to how many teachers might make up a three-team model?
So there's not going to be any, any different changes from the number of teachers who relatively float now, so there's a couple of teachers who float between rainbow sort of like participants on the team from one grade level to the next grade level, or across grade level. So we're not, we're not necessarily expanding that, it's not going to be any different in the program that currently exists at the moment. The three by three tends to be, again, for districts of, of our size and our demographics, it tends to be the way that the schedule, it looks like that's the way it's going, based on the, the meetings with the consultant, with the middle school teachers. So basically, it's not going to change, Katie, in terms of any concerns that I, the pure model, like, there's nobody, there's nobody going between grade levels, there's no rainbow teachers, that's always, always ideal, I guess, if you would look, look like that, but that's not necessarily the way all school districts work, there's always some variation of that to one degree to the other. The more you can eliminate that, probably the purer it is, but it's not going to be any more or less than what it is currently now, operational. Because basically, they would all be in the one team, and it can all be sit there together at the one time in the one place, so it splits that up a little bit. There is plenty of meeting time for teachers at the middle school, for professional development, for intervention for students, for support. Actually, I think we can do more interventions for students by doing this, and support for students and opportunities to consider this to student social, emotional, and academic growth.
So this, this enrollment-driven changes with the retirements and resignations maintains the two FTE equivalents who are providing instructional intervention? Is that correct?
No. So because you're having more people teaching five, it's really down to one. In terms of how many people are going to teach in a grade, you're, for the most part, you're going to have three teachers per core subject area, so three in sixth grade for studies, math, et cetera. When you get to eighth grade, because you're not down to that nine number yet, you'll probably have four, because the teachers who are teaching four will likely be on your eighth grade, because there's one less section that they can teach. So in eighth grade, you'll probably have four teachers on one team in those cores, and then in the sixth and seventh grade, you'd have three teachers in the individual core subjects.
John, did you have a question?
Just a follow-up. How many teachers are left teaching four classes after the, if these were to be approved?
So it'd probably be around 20 or so. So right now, you have 41, so you're basically cutting that in half.
Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you.
As the conversation on this topic continues, I'd love to also understand how we're considering the growth in our enrollment at the middle school, because we are projected to be up another 50 students at Middlesex by fiscal '27, which is not far off in the distance. So we've talked about how hard it is to scale back. I'd like us to talk about how we'll make it not so hard to scale back up when the time is right, please.
Anything else on the retirements and resignations or enrollment-driven changes?
On the elementary?
Yeah.
Questions? For art, can you, can somebody confirm or correct me? Does this mean that we are back in a situation where each elementary school does not have its own dedicated art teacher in the building?
Correct.
So we have itinerant art?
Yes.
And not building housed art teachers? And for music, am I wrong? I thought we had had a 0.6 cut at Middlesex in music, and a 1.2 cut on the table for elementary, but now it's down to a 1.0 cut? And I was curious why the change.
I had the, I believe I had the 1.0 at the elementary.
We were able to find extra FTE at the middle school. Colleen Thompson was able to do that, so that's why the number changed slightly.
So it went down to a 1.0 instead of a 1.2? Okay. Just, just to put it out there, I, I continue to have a very hard time with the idea of an elementary school not having a dedicated art teacher in the building.
Alan, you mentioned that you have continued the work with the consultant about middle school scheduling.
Yes.
Do you have an estimation on when or if the board might hear an updated presentation on, on how things, you know, like, kind of the results of?
We're not going to get an updated presentation until, like, I mean, updated, until this is actually completed. I mean, we're not going to be coming back in the summer and doing a presentation on the schedule. So that's not going, like, that's not going to come before a decision is made, or otherwise, he's in that process right now. I would just ask the board to consider, I've tried to have listened to the board, I'm taking what I think are your values and what your priorities are, and around teaming to make sure that we have teams, to make sure we personalize the middle school experience, to make sure we don't take away programs from the kids, to make sure that there's interventions for the kids, and to let us execute on that. I'm trying to give you the update on it, I'm trying to say to you where it seems it's going at the moment. Honestly, like, your job is to put the parameters around it, set with the values, and mine is to work within the policy and those values, and that's what I'm trying to do to execute on that. And I'm confident with the staffing, the enrollment, the schedule that we'll do, that we'll be able to execute on that. I know you, it's like, okay, well, I have to discuss it, but you do, right? I mean, that's...
Okay. So respectfully, my question is, when do you expect the consultant to complete their work? And I understand that it likely is not going to be before we finish these budget decisions and voting, but I am asking if we might hear an update from the consultant about their recommendations ahead of the next school year. You said tonight that it would likely be a three-by-three model, but what if it's not? Is that something where they would come back to us and discuss their findings and recommendations?
Okay. I can take that on consideration.
Okay. Any questions about non-certified staff?
I'll, I'll throw it out there that I do not like the, taking away the Paris. You all know that that was my add-back in, and I think it hurts. And to those who say that this two and a half million dollar cut doesn't hurt kids, that hurts kids.
Julie?
I also don't like losing the Paris, but my question is on the campus monitor cut. I'd love to hear a little more about that. What are we losing? Do we consider this a sustainable change in staffing, or is this something we're doing to get through the year? Is there something else we envision moving forward? We talk about it's a complicated campus to, to secure or protect, so I would just like to understand a little more of the thinking behind that being a viable, or, yeah, recommendation.
So I would say, again, the, the campus monitors are not sort of safety, and they don't provide safety and security. They do in the sense of supervision, oversight, right? So there's no doubt about that, right? And there's areas outside the courtyard, inside the cafeteria, or other areas in the schools where they have to patrol, so to speak, for want of a better term, or be a presence. I would not recommend a reduction if I didn't feel as if we could manage it. Now, the high school principal, in all honesty, doesn't like it, okay? But a review of where, where they are, what they're doing, with the director of security and myself, as a previous high school principal, I wouldn't, I wouldn't remove something if I didn't think it was tolerable, right? Or it was, we could, we could work with it. Nothing, like, there's, there's nothing ideal in these, some of these things, right? So there are some forced choices that we have to make, but we have armed security up there. We have a number of campus monitors in line with our comparative district, so to speak, and I think that we can manage that. We also currently have a model, the whole administrative model adds another administrator who should be out and about, and they're not an overpaid campus monitor, don't get me wrong there, but they should have a greater presence around school that will also offset a little bit. So I feel okay with, with making this change.
Thank you. Okay. Questions about in-sourcing?
Going back to the Paris. So you mentioned in here Greenwich and Ridgefield have no instructional paraprofessionals. Do they supplement teaching in other ways, or they just don't have them?
So Ridgefield has lunch monitors and recess monitors, and so we have lunch monitors as well, but they also have recess monitors who supervise the kids during recess. Greenwich only has special education Paris and ELL Paris. They do have a more robust copy center, and so, you know, even with the copy center here, we do have Paris in the building, we're making copies for teachers and doing some of the things like that. There's a much bigger push for copy center using Greenwich.
Thank you. Katie.
Thank you. I have a comment on the instructional aids as well. I'm not supportive of this cut. I continue not to be. I think that I've never liked it when we talk about return of, on investment of our students. However, in terms of the budget, these staff members, the return that we get for the cost of the line item in the budget is always going to outweigh. And I have a lot of concerns about making general education less accessible to students. These are instructional aids that can help everyone, that greatly help our teachers. And I have concerns about what the ramifications will be and what the potential leads are to other potentially more costly, more individual interventions that can arise. Not to mention the impact that it will have to our culture.
Dave, then Dennis.
So this is probably premature. I'll just put it up for probably the next meeting. Just trying to think through process because I struggled with this one too. What happens if between now and the 28th, we get to the 28th and we're in a situation where nobody agrees and we're over our 2 million? Like, how's that all going to shake out?
That's why we actually built ourselves a little extra time. If we on the 28th can't get to a number, we get to whatever number we can on the 28th and then we've got two more meetings in June.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
I, I had pretty much the same question, but maybe phrased in a different way is, is I'm hearing my fellow board members saying they're not comfortable with roughly $800,000 of cuts and we need to come up with $2.5 million. So I'm not sure how we're going to pencil that. If we're, I think this whole, this whole month plus is going to be uncomfortable. I don't think there's a way around that. I think we're going to have to make difficult choices and how we're going to do that is going to be difficult and, and strenuous and but I think we're going to have to make, we, I think we have to make these cuts. We have no alternative. We can't just say, I don't want to, I don't like, it's, it's, we have to make it.
Greg and Julie.
Just touching on what Dennis was just alluding to. I mean, I, I do think we did raise, I guess I raised maybe three months ago now, the idea of the admin cuts. So we have had a lot of time to think about that. It's been three months. It hasn't been two weeks or however long it was at that time when we were rushed. There's been a lot of time to think about that. And I know that's something that I, I was strongly encouraged. I thought that I would be supportive of that and I continue to be supportive of that in the context of what we're looking at.
Thank you. Julie.
Thank you. I just wanted to weigh in on what Dennis was touching on. Cause you're right, we, we're going to have to do this. And there are a number of things that I'm going to tell you I don't like and I'm going to have to do them. Cause that's the position we've been put in because this is a large cut and it's going to hurt. And we're going to have to give on things that we're not comfortable giving up.
Yeah, I think, just to build on that, I think it's a very different mindset than where we were when we voted February 8th or whatever that was. These are cuts, these are numbers that we are being forced upon us. And we likely will not, in my opinion, we're not going to do what's best for the district because of a decisive decision that is being forced on us. It doesn't feel good.
John.
I would figure out, I'd just say add that we should probably figure out a way in the next fiscal year that we find ways that we don't find ourselves facing two and a half million dollars in cuts. Cause it is uncomfortable when it's out of.
Questions about insourcing?
Shirley, can I, the, the SLP insourcing, how many we will not, we will still have contracted out? What, how many will we still have in the contract?
It depends on who we can hire for those two additional, which services, what specializations they'll have. So I can come back once I have a better idea of the candidates.
And are you confident that we can hire these in-house people, that they will be?
I'm confident of the two speech language pathologists. The OTs, I'll have to see, I know two already that were, well, two that I believe are available. I don't know. So we know we'll have to, we've put in for five, we currently have seven. So I'm leaving a couple contracted in there. We're hoping we can get to five. If not, I'll come back to the board.
What happens if this goes through and we can't get to five?
I have to contract.
Okay. So then that misses up our budget. Okay.
So if that were to happen, we would end up bringing a transfer to the board to take the money and salaries and benefits into the contracted account. And you would still obviously have that differential, which is the savings. It is for the OTs, it is a model that's pretty widespread across.
Rich, on the, forgive me for not calling that in advance, but the, on the SLPs, it doesn't have defined benefit or defined contribution?
The SLPs are in the teachers' union, so they're a part of TRB. The, the OTs would be a part of a forum.
Got it. And then the groundskeepers define benefit because that's also part of a union.
That's part of the union, correct.
Got it. Katie.
Shirley, can you confirm that the SLPs and the OTs would be trained at the same level of the providers that we're currently contracting with?
So the SLPs will be trained, we, all our SLPs are trained within district. So we have, we're confident in that. The OTs will have to contract just for initial training. We'll probably use our same contracted source of the two that I'm holding on to.
So I've heard a fair amount about prompt training with SLPs. Is that something that you would expect these incoming SLPs to have?
And the majority of our SLPs currently are prompt trained.
Thank you. Julie.
Thank you. This is kind of hard to ask and I don't know if we can answer it right now, but it, it sounds like the reason that this might work now and hasn't been an option to us previously is kind of the magic of what supports we need to provide presently. And, and, and in how much of it, the mask, so that it now makes sense to bring providers in-house? Am I understanding that part correctly?
Well, for OTs, it's something we've looked at every year in terms of feasibility and availability of OTs also. I think the reason now we realize is because there's been such turnover with our contracted services that that really propelled us to want to bring it in-house.
Okay. So that's. It's not that it becomes less expensive now because we have to provide so much that it's more efficient to have it provided in-house?
No, but there, I mean, there will be a savings as Rich indicated there, there is a savings of that.
Okay. So my question then becomes if we're struggling to find individuals with all of the right certifications or abilities, at what point do we then start ta- taking away the savings that we're now realizing by bringing these in-house? And how tricky does that become? How nebulous is that, I guess?
No, it's probably me not understanding and I'm sure you're doing a really good job, Katie. But if you can, Rich.
I think if, if the volume of need goes down, how do you adjust the staffing mix?
Well, if the volume of need goes down, which that's, that's one way. Or if what we're able to find to provide, we can't achieve the level that we need to achieve. What kind of combination of contracted versus in-house then becomes less of a good decision for us?
I'll go with the latter one first, okay? So the latter one is we're anticipating our proposal is to have part contracted and part in-house as we move towards that. So we're, as we, as we, let's say we're doing five and two. Right now we'd have five, if we can have our own and two contracted. We'll look, I think if we can move into fully contracted based on our student need, we'll do that. If for some reason it does go down, we'll use less contracted. So I think if that answers it.
Thank you.
So just building on this, I know, I know Dennis. We didn't do this for a number of years also because we were worried about retention. Because there was a lot of turnover within house too. So has anything changed in the labor market?
Oh, we've never had in-house OT.
Never at all?
No, I mean, not in the nine years we've been here.
Okay.
We've worked, yeah, we haven't in nine years.
And that's just my poor recollection. Okay.
Yeah, I just have a general question, I think, on insourcing. And, and, you know, again, for me, we're, we've brought in a busing. We've, now we're talking about bringing OT, we're talking about doing background checks. At what point does, do our outsourcing not be? I, I don't understand why outsourcing is much more expensive than bringing it in-house. I think in-house is, we have to manage it, we have to pay for benefits. There's a lot of, I'm thinking unknown costs that we're not capturing here. And I'm struggling with that. And then my second question is why these particular insourcing? Why not all insourcing? Why not, you know, I, I believe we have some custodians that we do outsourcing. Why are they not being brought in? I, I don't understand, how did we cherry pick these versus those?
So it depends on price. It's a mixture of price, mixture of hours, mixture of benefits. So for the OTs, for example, two things were really two drivers that changed. One is the cost of outside providers and the number of hours that we're using. Moving to a defined or contribu- contribution 401A model also changes the mix in terms of whether or not you're going to save money. So since these are unaffiliated employees, the type of pension that they're going to get does change the mixture of the cost. For custodians, if we were to bring in like full-time district custodians at the high school, you would need six, right? So even with the new salary schedule at $600,000 versus a $300,000 contract rate. So the math doesn't work. I mean, certainly you could look at bringing part timers in and the math could potentially work. You know, for SLPs, I, I think one of the things that changed besides price is I think having ELP in Ox Ridge also made a difference because one of the things with contractors that you can do is you don't need a full 1,200 hours in a year, right? So if a full-time SLP is 1,200 hours in the district, ideally you need that person maybe all at Ox Ridge. Whereas if you hire a contractor, maybe you're having somebody to do 50 hours at high school, another person from the, the agencies do, you know, 100 hours here and 200 hours there. And it might piece together a person, but you can't piece together that person as your own district employee because you can't carve that person up, you know, five or six ways. So in some instances, it makes sense to contract out, like our food service operations. It made financial sense to contract out. In some instances, you know, the market prices competitors out. And so that's what happened with the bus contract. You know, they came in at a price that essentially priced them out of the market. And for OTs, it's the amount of hours they need and they've essentially priced themselves out of the market. I mean, if we're charged, you know, $150 an hour for an OT, that OT is not actually seeing that $150 an hour. You know, they're lucky if they're seeing half of that. And so we have the ability to offer competitive salary, competitive benefits, stability. If you're working for an agency, whether it's a custodian or OT, you might be working on five or six different accounts and floating around all of Connecticut. Whereas if you're a district employee, you know, you have a location, maybe you have one specific school. So it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on insourcing?
Just one specific, the, the groundskeeper, Kevin in, in the budget books had said that this, he wanted a groundskeeper for 25, 26. Is this, this groundskeeper or is this, are we still expecting another one in 25, 26?
So he would be stuck essentially with just this groundskeeper? I mean, in a perfect world, Kevin would want the care grounds account plus the groundskeeper. And so the downside is that, as Dr. Adley mentioned, you know, in the beginning of the year and around graduation, that's when outside landscapers will come in, they mulch the garden, they do flower beds, the irrigation on the fields. That's going to fall on the in-district grounds crews.
Okay.
Rich, did we ask the police department if they could do the fingerprinting?
We, we don't have, it's not convenient. They're not able to do it. It's better if we do it in-house. And also as part of the minority recruitment plan, we had, did identify an onboarding process where there was personal contact with the, you know, with, with the HR department from beginning to end. It's just been really difficult to schedule with the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, with this in, sorry, with the, with the staff background checks, I know it's not a big money, but how much time are we going to devote to this and what are we going to lose by doing this in-house?
It shouldn't take long. It's now a scanner, so you don't, you're not rubbing ink on anyone. So it should be, and it's all computerized, so it really shouldn't take much time.
Okay.
Okay. Questions on revenue? Dennis.
So with the sports, why, why the thought of the, the four, I believe it's four sports that already pay to have them pay above and beyond that? Or is it just, I mean, is that what we feel is equitable? Is that every, every athlete pays $200? And we continue with families paying extra to support sports which are not housed at Darian campus? Or I guess that's our, the philosophy, but I'd love to hear some thoughts.
So those tend to have, you know, external expenses such as, right, rank time rental facilities and so on. So, so yes, I mean, you can do any modification of it. There's a suggestion on the table about participation fees, so there's a variation that the board would like to consider differently. That's fine, it's a starting point or a thoughtful contribution to what it might look like. But, but currently under this proposal, yes, anyone doing those other sports at the 70, 30, we still have to make that additional fee. But with a thousand dollars as a cap. So we, so we tried to look.
Can I make a request then to see what it would be without the, the four sports that, that we have parents, parent funding? To see if those students are taking out of the equation to pay the $200? Or is there an opposite to that? Or pay 200 and no overage, right?
That won't work well. Okay. So, and then if we could see the financial detail, Rich, also, please. Sarah.
Thank you. Sort of a, not, not really exactly about revenue, but about athletics. Was there, did you guys have any thoughts about, are there other ways to find some efficiencies within that RC? Knowing that that's not a, you know, a core academic requirement of our, it's an extracurricular.
So I have tried not to reduce programs for students. I, I'm not sure you'd like me to recommend the next program that I would, I would put on the table. If, if you would want me to put a program on the table, I could tell you the program. I don't think you want me to tell you at this particular point, I don't think it's beneficial. But I've tried not to put any program on the table, whether it's an extracurricular program or otherwise. I've tried not to impact student. Athletics is important to our students. The arts are important to our students. Enter murals, we haven't touched enter murals. I just don't think we should go down there, honestly. I just don't think that that's necessary if, if that's one of the questions. But we've just tried, Sarah, just not to impact a particular, for the want of a better term, a particular program, student program.
Julie.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Dr. Adley. I guess my, my follow-up would be how, how hard have we looked for ways that we could get anything out of this RC without impacting the student experience? Because it does seem to me that it is not sustainable for this RC to, to increase its operating expenses at almost double digits year over year. And while I recognize that the participation fee could turn up some, some money to, to offset things a little bit. We still haven't found any way to bring those costs down at all. We made a cut to this RC in our deliberations and it, it's not really a cut. We just kicked the can down the road on the uniform replacement cycle. So we have still not found any way to do this more efficiently or affordably. And I think we do have to look at that harder. We are, we're, we're, you know, cutting people out of classrooms, out of direct student contact positions. And we are not necessarily, to, to my understanding, looking at this as hard as it needs to be looked at. And I think we need to give it more consideration.
I am quite prepared if a board member has a better idea respectfully about what, what we're talking about in terms of like what specifically are you talking about reducing freshman sports? Are you talking about no, no cuts? Are you talking about too many coaches? I'm happy to explore something if, if there's.
I guess the first place I would ask the question is the, the additional coach and two assistant coaches that we're presently planning to add for next year, which we're currently operating without. And we seem to have quite a robust, successful, satisfactory program. And so I'd like to see if that's an option or if those particular roles are too critically important to the program, then are there other similar that could be spared for the time being?
With like the back and looking at them, I would just say that there are, you know, there are some other factors here. One, we have an inclusive sort of philosophy of including kids and, and keeping them connected. And, and to some degree, expanding some of the coverages for coaches. There's safety and supervision necessary when you do that. So those are a couple of the reasons why we would continue, or we have continued to expand that the, based on student interest and so on. So that would be a bit of a different philosophy potentially, but we're happy to look at it.
Thank you. Katie.
Thank you. I understand that this is a complicated and often charged topic. There's a few things that I think we have disconnects in and it's entirely possible that we see things differently. But this, it has to be discussed now. This is a large number and, you know, to Julie's point, you know, and, and RC with an increase of 9.5% over last year, that is. that is not an academic component warrants discussion in this environment. I appreciate Alan very much, your comments about trying not to reduce programming for student. I think it's very important for us to have this budget reflect our priorities. And what we put in this budget will become our priorities. Whether it's what we say or not, it will show it that way. I would argue that we already have impacts to our students in this proposal. Paraprofessionals impact our students. Teachers, larger class sizes, impact our students. Participation fees work against an inclusive philosophy. There are teams at the high school that anyone can join. There are teams that students join just because it's their only chance to have an athletic experience at the high school. Teams where students will never play varsity and are there for community. Introducing a $200 participation fee is a barrier. Whether it's a financial one or not, it is a barrier and we need to acknowledge that. We, we can't shy away from that fact. Another concern that I have with it is I can't reconcile a one-size-fits-all player tax when the cost per athlete varies so widely by sport. It's very hard for me to understand how we will tax an athlete $200 for a sport that maybe only costs $400 per athlete to the district. And we will also tax an athlete $200 for a sport that costs the district $3,000 per athlete. Additionally, I think this conversation would be easier to have if we had had a more robust analysis of our athletic program. It's very hard to have this conversation when there are still a lot of discrepancies by sports. When we hear that certain teams, students are required to purchase all of their protective gear individually and certain teams provide it. How do we begin a conversation about equity when it doesn't exist?
So just to comment, just a little bit of perspective. I, I do agree like it is a barrier at some level, it could potentially be a barrier. As soon as you put something in there, potentially that is, we wouldn't want to, that to be the case clearly. I would say though, that I mean, this board, a couple of times has done a deep dive into athletics. We had a whole retreat a couple of years ago on athletics, twice, two years in a row, essentially. We did the CIAC update on it. You may say, well, it didn't go anywhere maybe, or, or we got something out of it or otherwise. But, but we have done it. It's not accurate to say we haven't. This board sat around and went through that process pretty, pretty thoroughly, I think. But this, this is the administration's way to start to put on a table a suggestion that does actually impact athletics, but it does impact our, our families, there's no doubt about that. I don't, I'm, I'm not disputing that. It, it does, once you put something in place. I, I don't mean necessarily against it though, but, but I get, that point's a valid point. There's no doubt about that. I wouldn't want, I would not want to see students impacted by they're coming on in freshman soccer or something. And just because of, of the costs that they, for some reason that they, they don't show up then, they don't, they don't participate because of, because of the money. I hope that that wouldn't be the case. I couldn't exclude that being the case, but your point is, is noted inappropriate.
This model, Rich, does include some financial aid, correct? Yes, over and above perhaps free and reduced lunch, but any, would you show us what you've built because?
Yeah. So it's, so obviously if somebody is on free lunch, it's free. If they're on reduced, they get a discount. And then we also, not just for this, but other things. If there's like a, an economic hardship that's presented, typically it's presented to the guidance counselor. The guidance counselor would recommend a certain scholarship.
It's a, it's a bit like other, other parts of the community that we have. But I wouldn't also say like some people, if, if they are free and reduced, they don't want to talk, they don't want to do that. They don't want the awkwardness of it or they don't just want to do it. So I would also recognize, I'm not going to say that doesn't, we, we try to deal with those very respectfully on a case-by-case basis where we know that's the case, but, but that's also a factor. Like there's definitely, we definitely will come up with some of those scenarios.
Okay. Sarah?
So I think as a reminder too, if we do this, some version of this participation fee, doesn't mean that we have to do it every year going forward. We could decide as a board that in our, not going forward in the budget, that this is not what we're doing. And I think Katie's use of the word tax is exactly what this is. We are being forced to have parents take money out of this pocket instead of taking out of that pocket in their property taxes. And different budgets, different years have different, different outcomes. So maybe, you know, this might just be a one-year situation that's being forced upon us by other, by other powers. So I, I don't know that we need to decide this for, not infinite, this is for next year.
I would also say, just to clarify, I'd much rather do something like this than reduce a program for, for students in the athletic program.
Julie?
Thank you. Two things, well, no, I guess just one. Rich, for both of these revenue items, the food service and the participation fees, does this assume that all participants continue at the same existing level? So everybody who buys lunch, it's going to be the same amount of kids buying lunch? That $20 a month won't be a deterrent?
Yeah. I mean, so for the lunch, we looked at what the sales were for this year and then for the portion of last year. So essentially like a roll in 10 months and said, okay, well, if the price was this, we'd earn X. For the participation fees, we looked at the number of participants that we have. And sports obviously could change if you have more or less, but what was the last go-around for participation?
Thanks. So when we look at your model, do you have built in an assumption that we could see some sort of falloff either from participation or from just collection?
So we did not build in that we'll see a decline in the number of participants. It's hard to say if we would. You'd probably have to survey, I guess, you know, families or students, whether or not they would. What we built in was essentially financial aid and then the family cap. So the family cap set at a thousand, so as an example, if you had two children, they both played three sports. If you had no family cap, it'd be $1,200, in this case, thousand.
I think it's probably appropriate to build some sort of factor that involves collection and participation.
End factor.
Yeah, but I think collection also will be a, a component.
Okay.
Yes.
Katie?
I wanted to talk about the food service subsidy. Our profit margins here are pretty high. I find this one difficult. My real question is, what happens to the sustainable kitchen project under this idea?
So for, under this idea, we would essentially, our profit margin going forward. So right now we're running, you know, forecasting third cost of $130,000, we predict. So this, we essentially run that from the zero and then use those funds to offset. We do, are, we are sitting on close to $600,000 fund balance, which is used for things like sustainability, capitalizing, replacing the equipment, things like that. So as a breakdown, just found over four with the token eat project. And then we would have to see whether have you gone to draw down on that fund balance number four or.
So there's a potential that this model eliminates our ability to fund the sustainable kitchen projects beyond token eat.
So you could still fund it through a drawdown on fund balance, which the board would have to decide. So you, you are sitting on close to $600,000, which is really more than we probably need.
For every school to be converted into?
So at some point we would have to decide. So some of the schools, it would be difficult to do like homes, just based on the size of the kitchen. You know, how much you want to draw down or if you want to make that a capital expenditure going forward. If you wanted to, that's another option. But it does reduce obviously the, the available cash flow within the fund.
So I think it's important to note the, the losses that come along with some of these proposals. And to me, that is certainly an important project being put at risk, if not being lost. And I think that's a consideration that the board needs to take.
At the same time, I don't think we want to sit on $600,000 if we have a chance to use it. You know, we want to be careful about not accumulating. So not, I'm not discounting, but I also want to be careful to not accumulate money when we have operating. So thank you for putting someone, something forward. Okay. Are there questions on equip?
Just to confirm, I mean, none of this goes away, right? We'll need the desks eventually. We're going to replace the, the really terrible ones that we saw on the facilities tour first and then move down the line.
Yep.
And on the laptops also.
So you'll see those in the following years.
So not, not a cut, not a change, just kicking the can.
Okay. The only thing I'd say on that one is I'm happier to do the, the desks over five years than to lump sum. Just in terms of replacement cycles. Okay. Anything else on equipment? All right. Anything else? Folks would like to discuss on this topic? No? With that, I'll move, go ahead.
Can I, can I just confirm, right, that, and I know Katie asked me a respectful question, but the board is asking, is the board asking me to come back and bring a presentation back by this, this consultant? Because honestly, I, like, that to me is like just unnecessary.
Not right now, no. Not, not, nothing to do with this budget.
Okay. I just want to care about that.
No, that was, yeah, and that was not my request. I simply was asking that were there to be a significant change to the middle school model that there would be time for the board to discuss it? That was the spirit of my question.
I, I recognize that. I would just say again, I don't think that's a board's purview to actually, you, you say to the administration, honor these principles of, of teams and so on and so forth, and that's what I go and execute on. I'm just, I'm just being honest at the table. I don't think that that's a board purview thing, that's.
Right. So to the point of discuss, we're not voting on the team model or what team model you put in place. But the board would like to be informed.
Okay, that's right.
Okay. Julie?
I, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that Dr. Adley felt like he got what he needed from us regarding our request to see something at the administrative level.
The only thing I would say is, does administration go to my cabinet sitting here in front of me? Other members of administration other than department heads? I mean, is it globally you're talking administration or is it, you work it out?
Well, I mean, personally, if I, if pushed, I would say that the two administrators that were added to this current budget that don't currently exist in district would probably be the first place I would ask you to look and see and hear what you think about that. But I don't want to be suggesting that I know the right answer. I'm just saying that, that, that to me would seem the lowest hanging fruit at the moment.
Well, we'd have to unwind then the whole plan, right? The whole special education plan gets unwound, unwind that, so. But I just want to know if it's globally or are you thinking?
It's globally.
That's the answer, I'm sorry.
Okay. With that, I'll move to public comment.
Good evening. If anybody in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. Please state your name and address for the record and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the time with the chair. Crystal Hill, co-chair of CDSP, 300 Brookside Road. CDSP and numerous MMS parents spoke in front of this board during the initial budget process and made clear our concerns regarding the loss of six teachers at MMS. We heard feedback from parents that removing six student-facing adults at a time when our students seemed to be in the need, in need of more support, not less, was short-sighted. Additionally, parents strongly communicated that they were not in favor of any weakening of the team model at MMS. In the course of budget deliberations, many parents were never confident that there was a real feasible plan in place to remove six teachers and keep the team model intact. We remain skeptical that a three-team model in sixth and seventh grade would really achieve the purpose of the current team model. So it's discouraging that here we are, months later, and the new proposed budget modification would reduce not just six teachers originally proposed, but eight in total. Seven is outlined in this modification and the reduction of one music teacher that was passed in the original budget vote. While we appreciate that five of those eight reductions will come via early retirements and not through the firing of current teachers, the fact that eight less teachers will be at MMS still raises concerns over appropriate staffing levels and the viability of the team model going forward. Back in February, a majority of this board agreed with parents and added those MMS teaching positions back to the budget. So why are we now looking to remove even more teachers than was originally proposed? Additionally, our elementary parents argued that the loss of instructional aids and reduction of special teachers would negatively impact our youngest learners, and it will. Instructional aids are a vital support for our teachers in our elementary schools and parents were resistant to the idea of having special teachers spread thin across multiple elementary schools without the opportunity to create unique communities at each of our schools. But again, here we are, months later, after a majority of the board also agreed with parents on those cuts, we're back with them on the top table for discussion. In conversations with parents about the proposed cuts, we heard repeatedly that parents preferred teachers on the ground over more administrators. But the one thing these suggested budget modifications don't touch is administration. There's not a single trim to the administrative budget in these modifications and the budget included two brand-new administrators at MMS and DHS. While we understand there are no good solutions when you have to remove nearly $2.5 million from a budget, it seems inflexible to insist on cuts that parents and the majority of this board already rejected while not even considering areas for possible additional budget modifications.
Joanna Walsh, 17 Pleasant Street, the other co-chair of CDSP. I would like to congratulate the administration for their scientific breakthrough. This memo is a time machine as it transfers us all back to four months ago. The way some of these recommendations are presented, it's as if they are shiny and new, never before seen, discussed, debated, or voted on. And I'm not just referring to the elimination of MMS teachers, specialist teachers and instructional aids. I'm also referring to participation fees. Participation fees, along with raised costs, raised lunch costs are an additional tax on students and families. When the Board of Finance cut $2 million from this budget, they said they needed to keep, they needed to do it to keep tax rates down for all taxpayers. They did not say tax-only parents of school-aged children, but that is what this does. PTOs in this town already pay for an enormous amount of things that many would argue in a town like Darien should be paid for the Board of Education. Besides teacher appreciation things and celebrations, which are organized and paid for by each PTO, we also pay for field trips, the buses for field trips, enriching programs like mad science to come to the school. We pay for authors to present to students in person. We pay for playground equipment. We pay for school supplies and school year startup costs. We pay for classroom books. We pay for fidget toys and free little libraries and gaga pits and picnic tables and garden supplies. All of these things are funded by parents. It comes out of our pockets or out of the labor that we put in to raise money through book fairs and auctions and carnivals and fun runs or walk-a-thats. And we are not the only organization in town that does this. There's the Blue Wave Booster Club as well, youth sports organizations that donate, DJFL, DYH, DYV, all the DY youth. Parents donate to Theater Through 8, they donate to Post 53. And this list is obviously incomplete because I cannot list every way parents donate in, in town in these three allotted minutes. Parents all do this voluntarily. We understand that often there are numerable nice-to-haves and the district PR prioritizes need-to-haves. Participation fees are mandatory. Lunch costs are mandatory. If you want to be a first-class school district, you have to offer a robust curriculum, but you also have to offer a robust community with sports and arts and music. Public schools are a public good. When someone moves to Darien, they expect that their taxes will fund the district, not most of the district. We all pay for the library and the road maintenance and the depth servicing on Great Island. We all pay for the senior center. A subset of parents shouldn't pay for the full high school experience. Parents are tired of getting their pockets picked.
Luz Elena Bueno or Elena Tendoven, whatever, 123 Hoyt Street. So the Board of Education is being forced to cut tons of people, mostly teachers. In the last five years, the nominal increase in the budget has all gone to increase in costs like healthcare, transportation, I mean, whatever, you, you saw it all. Other things that are related to the inflationary environment that we're living in. At no point, this board has taken any excessive expenditures or even adding programs. I mean, we're struggling here not to cut programs. It's just being able to buy less with each dollar. It's just being able to buy less with each dollar because what that is inflation. The Board of Finance doesn't seem to understand as they approve budgets below inflation levels, like they consider we should suggest the teachers they eat a little less. Given that the Board of Education is a creature of the state, not the municipality, and has to fulfill the duties required by the state. Do we consider that at this point, the Board of Finance is interfering with the statutory responsibility of the Board of Education? And legal action against the Board of Finance becomes necessary? The Board of Finance has to give the Board of Education the money to fulfill the duties. But if they're not even giving the money to pay for the increases in healthcare insurance premiums, transportation and security and the flowers, which I guess we're going to ask the teachers to attend the flower beds. We have to cut 15 teachers of, whatever, 15 in total personnel to cover cost. It seems to me that clearly the Board of Finance is not giving the money to fulfill the requirements. And the only option at this point may be legal. Thank you.
Good evening. Sandy Savage, 22 Pleasant Street. I'm here tonight as co-president of the Darien Para Professional Instructional Aids and Campus Monitors Union. I just want to remind you, I appreciate everything you've do. I'm sorry for the decisions you have to make. I feel bad for you. But I just want to remind you that this is what our instructional aids do every day. They're the ones that get our children off the buses, bring them to the playground. Then they bring them into the classroom. They unpack their backpacks and make sure that their lunches are unpacked. They're ready to start the day. They also cover the teacher when the teacher is trying to meet with small groups. They also cover when they're covering PPTs, when they are also covering for training sessions. They're the, the people that bring your kids to lunch, that watch them at recess, make sure that they can open their milk, open their yogurt containers. They're making sure that they're sitting with someone so that their lunch experience is fun. And then at the end of the day, they're the people that pack up those backpacks and make sure that everything gets in those backpacks to get home to you guys and that they get on the correct bus or they get to the correct parent to get home. I also wanted to say that for the campus monitors, as you stated, it is a difficult building. The high school is huge. So, you know, they, they are there to correct, do the traffic, make sure that people don't get hit as they're walking across the street, even the staff. They're awesome. They also have to make sure that the kids are where they're supposed to be. Like Dr. Adley said, they're in the cafeteria, they're at the welcome center checking to make sure no one's coming in that's not supposed to. They're walking the halls, they're making sure we feel safe and it would be a loss. But again, it's a hard decision and I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I have for you for tonight. And thank you very much for all you do.
Hi, my name is Melanie DeLuca. I live at 133 Old Kings Highway in Wilton. Good evening and thank you for a chance to speak with you. I am currently a DPS instructional para professional at Tokneek School. I have been both a special education and instructional para during my many years here at DPS and it has been a privilege to serve the students and the families in the district. In college, I studied both early childhood education and sociology. And I feel, and I've always felt so lucky that I found a career that uses the knowledge in both of those areas of study. As an instructional para professional, I have the honor of working alongside the very best grade level teams around, including certified and non-certified staff. I also have the pleasure of working with students who are determined to succeed in everything they do. My current position is by definition, a support staff role. There used to be a time when the position of instructional para was different. It was more clerical in nature. However, by necessity and changing times, I have seen the role morph into what it is now, which is supporting students, staff and building administration. We receive DPS professional development training during the school year, which provides consistency in the classrooms that we work in, as well as a better understanding of the certified staff goals and objectives. With assistance from teachers, we help students as they work to complete assignments in both the large classroom setting as well as in smaller group settings. This helps students accomplish their work, ask additional questions and ensure that they understand what is expected during the day. Each grade level has its own set of support needs as students grow and learn. Instructional paraprofessionals use our district training to offer appropriate grade level assistance to both students and teachers, and we are honored to be part of a cohesive educational team. We also help our building administration by covering for certified staff who may be required to attend work sessions and planning sessions and various meetings throughout the day. We also cover for classroom teachers who may need to be absent from school when our building subs are unavailable. In my opinion, educating our young people takes many dedicated hands, not fewer. So as the district I proudly serve discusses the budget for 2024, 25, I remain hopeful. I respectfully ask that the Board of Education try to find a way to reconsider cuts to support staff who work directly with the young people in our district every day. Thank you for your time.
Would anybody else in person like to speak? All right. If anyone online would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn and I'll thank everyone for their time. This, these conversations are challenging, but this is just the beginning. Julie, seconded by Dennis, all those in favor.